Good morning and welcome to the April 1st Planning Commission zoning hearing. We're going to start with invocation, and today we have Liliana Vasquez from Worship, the Worship Leader at Pure Hope Church to lead us. Thank you.
Hey, good morning. Y'all bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this morning. Thank you for waking us up and getting us all here safely. I pray that you would just bless this time together, that you would allow us to have the heart of you, that we would live like you, God, and that we would just love the people around us in these cases that we're going to go through today, as you would. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much for joining us. Would everyone please stand for the flag of allegiance?
Flag of Allegiance to comply and unite the space of America into the Republic for which is trans one nation, ungranted, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. I think we're ready to get started. I'll turn it to, I'll turn it to Mr. Peterson to kick us off.
Thank you. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in American order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call this if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. Then after recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns, and there's not a process to reserve your time or to rebuttal, as said previously. So please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. In front of the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case that's before them. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z2 of 2024, Florenoria Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 6th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z68 of 2024, Saks Ostel LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 6th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z68 of 2024 will not be heard today. LUP 8 of 2025, Angela Benitez. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May 6th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP 8 of 2025 will not be heard today. And lastly, SLUP 2 of 2025, Free Bird Communications LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May 6th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLUP 2 of 2025 will not be heard today. Before we actually start hearing the cases on today's agenda, I just want to have everyone in the audience, please turn your cell phones on mute. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcasting presentation. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing, and any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for April 1st, 2025. First case on consent is rezoning case Z6. Marshana Council requests rezoning from GC to R12 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 1207 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Douglas Drive, east of Nakoma Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, lot size reduction variance as stated in the zoning comments. And number two, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z6? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z8, Williamson Properties LLC requests rezoning from NRC to NRC for a real estate office with storage in Land Lot 85 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Canton Road and Acton Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division dated February 6th, 2025. Number two, variances as stated in the zoning comments and recommendations. Number three, refuse and designated recycling location facilities must be contained within a completely enclosed facility. Number four, no outdoor storage of vehicle parts. Number five, no outdoor display of merchandise. Number six, parking lot to be striped and all vehicles to be parked in a striped parking space. Number seven, Fire Department comments or recommendations. Number eight, Stormwater Management Division comments or recommendations. Number nine, Planning Division comments or recommendations. And number 10, Water and Sewer Division comments or recommendations. Oh, and additionally, and Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z8? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And finally, LUP 13, Sandy Klow, request a temporary land use permit for an art studio and storage of art prints, and this is a renewal, in Land Lot 336 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Trail Road, north of the intersection of Trail Road and Midway Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no signs. Number two, no on-street parking. Number three, no outdoor storage. And number four, two seasonal employees only. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 13? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, Board.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Summied. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Lindstrom. Any discussion? Let's call the question. Consent agendas approved by vote of 3 to 0. Thank you.
Okay, those who are in consent, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners' final decision. Moving into the regular agenda, first case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z7, Forton Coal Street LLC. Request rezoning from R15 to FST for townhomes in Land Lot 639 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Powder Springs Road and Wood Meadows Drive. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z7? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant, the owners, in this rezoning application. The property is 4.8 acres. It's located at the intersection of Wood Meadows Drive with frontage along Powder Springs Road. You can see where the property is on your screen now. This is just west of the intersection of Powder Springs Road and Macklin Road as well. It's also at the symbolized intersection you see there to the right, lower right, where Pear Road comes into Powder Springs Road. This property is surrounded on two sides by commercial properties along Powder Springs Road. Along its north side, it's a shopping center, as well as an existing LRC business. Across Powder Springs Road are two shopping centers as well. There are retail centers that are zoned NRC. This particular intersection, where you see the commercial, it's within an activity center. This property, though, is designated as not commercial, but designated for medium-density residential. And it's obvious why, from a future land use standpoint, it's designated as medium-density residential, because of Wood Meadows Drive, which takes back to a long ago established neighborhood and subdivision that's there. So having a commercial business on almost five acres at that location would seem out of place and impact those neighbors potentially. So it is MDR, medium-density residential, on your future land use plan. What we have proposed is to rezonate from its current category of R15 to a fee simple townhomes, FST, for a small development of a townhome community with a maximum of 24 townhomes. And you can now see the proposed design and layout for this townhome community of a maximum of 24 homes. I'm going to step over just to kind of go through it with you. Again, to orient you, this is Wood Meadows, then the frontage along Powder Springs Road. The townhome community does have, as opposed to a traditional cul-de-sac ending, one of the things that they wanted to look at was to make it more interesting for both the residents and guests, and create this area here is identified as a private alley for that section of the road, public road to a private alley, as opposed to just putting a cul-de-sac and surrounding that, which is not very interesting, with a private alley. So this section is considered private. You're able to have additional landscaping in the middle here for trees and bushes and things like that. It just makes it interesting. We've seen it in the past where you've seen cul-de-sacs that'll have an island in the middle of them that you can turn. Cobb DOT doesn't prefer those. It does not like those. And there's a reason why, because then you have a landscaped island that's in the middle of a public right of way, and that can become an issue for future maintenance for them. But we've designated this area for private, would be maintained by the Homeowners Association, which is mandatory, and it's just a small segment, but it does add some interest overall to how the turning function would be handled in this proposed community. The issues that were expressed in the comments from staff, staff's recommendation was to recommend approval, and we're in agreement with their recommendations, in agreement with their proposed conditions as well. But one of the issues that was highlighted was from Stormwater Division comments, just expressing some preliminary concerns about how Stormwater is going to be handled. Since we received those comments from Stormwater, our project engineer did get with Mr. Heath to go over those comments one by one. And based on what I was told about that meeting was that the takeaway was that Mr. Heath understood that the plan did include the items that needed to be addressed that he had identified. He also was able to obtain some additional information from the project engineer that was very helpful, so that those issues can be adequately addressed during plan review, once you have full hydrology and engineering. But in short, you can see that we've designated two areas for stormwater detention. We wanted to ensure that those are, at least at this early stage, oversized, because we will be over-d retaining on this site. We do have a stormwater management plan that will connect drainage to existing stormwater facilities in Wood Meadows Drive, as well as connect to an existing drainage easement that is in the adjacent subdivision that goes right up to our property. So we do have the ability to connect with established downstream drainage systems. Likewise, we've also made sure, as you can see by the sizing, that we will be able to over-d detain. In fact, which depicted on the site plan itself is taking that in and plus some to give some additional room to make sure that this plan does not get squeezed, or that there's adequate room for stormwater. What's shown here is more than adequate for even over-d detaining, but we wanted to be sure in our design and planning from a project engineer standpoint and an overall design standpoint. We have also submitted a letter of stipulations that you might expect for a project like this. Just to highlight a couple of those conditions and stipulations for you, there is a mandatory homeowners association. There will also be a leasing restriction, that no more than 10% of the homes may be leased at any one time, which is something that we've seen applied to projects such as this. We think this is a great location for a medium-density residential townhome development. With only 24 homes, it is 4.8 units per acre, and so it is within the medium-density residential estimated range and recommended range. And that's intentional. This project was brought in intentionally, looking at the land use plan, and looking at the surrounding zonings, and understanding that dynamic, and by providing a small townhome community of 24 homes, it fits within the land use plan. I think that's why you see staff supporting this application. In addition, our stipulations cover the variety of the items that you would expect for landscaping around the detention and along Powder Springs Road. One item that's not included in the stipulations, but I did want to make sure that was mentioned, there is most definitely a plan to have a community gathering location here. It is a smaller community, so it can only support so much, but there are a couple of locations that they're looking at, that there will be a community gathering location, be it a fire pit, a pavilion, or a gazebo of some sort, so that residents can have a place to gather and a nice place to meet and socialize. So that is included as part of this. It's not depicted, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned that, so that you would be assured that the developer and builder does include that in their plans, and we can certainly add that as a condition as well, and happy to do so. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Representatives of Forton Coal, developer and builder are here as well. We think that we presented an application that meets with the future land use plan, consistent with staff's recommendations, which we are in agreement with, and hopefully you are too. So we respectfully request your recommendation of approval, consistent with our stipulation letter and staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Approval of this petition would cause concern for Cobb County School District, as it will result in an impact on enrollment of one school already over capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we get your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Yeah, just put it on the mic, please. Thank.
Travis McCombe, Cobb County School District.
Thank you. All right, this is, is there any more opposition? Nope. Okay, this is in District 4, and since Commissioner Hughes is out, I'll lead the discussion for this. Can I first hear from, can I get Stormwater to come up? Is Stormwater here? I don't see Stormwater. Okay. Do we have anybody on standby for Stormwater? No? Okay. Thank you. I will hear from DOT. Let me hear from DOT. Hey, Amy. I want to ask you about Stormwater, but I won't do that to you.
Please don't. Many years.
The, can you talk to me about the public road and the private alleyway, and DOT's thoughts on the proposal?
I can. Can you bring that map up again, the site plan? So we do have some concerns. Basically, our recommendation eight listed some of them. One of them is the tight driveway spacing. With this site plan, they cannot make the driveway spacing that we require for a public street. Basically, the lots are just too close. They can't get 50 feet in between the driveways. They're literally right up next to each other. One of the other issues is that the kind of loop road they have, what they've proposed is the front part of the loop is public, and the back part of the loop is private. That's atypical. I discussed that with our division manager for construction, actually, our transportation division manager yesterday. And basically, any large public vehicle that goes back there, like for road maintenance, or garbage, or a school truck, or whatever, is when they go down a road, typically, we ask for the cul-de-sac so they can turn around, correct? When they come down this road, they're going to have to go on that private street to be able to turn around, because there's no turnaround otherwise. And so if they do any damage, or they can't make that turn, because it's a very tight turn, that's one of the reasons why it is private, then they're not going to, you know, be able to do that on a public facility. That may become a point of contention in the future if there's damage to the private roadway. The, one of the last things I'd like to point out is, on the part that they've designated as public on the site plan, they have what I call a hard corner, but it's a 90-degree corner, and they've done that so they can get that last lot to get a driveway at a 90-degree corner, and not kind of have a curve that cuts into that driveway. We don't allow this 90-degree. We require, you know, a curve. That would make that last lot that's on that curve not have a typical driveway. On the other side, on the private portion, they've got kind of a curved driveway that comes into a more typical corner radius. So they might be able to address that, but on this site plan, they have not. Based on all those concerns and discussion, what we would recommend for DOT is that we would not have set this road as public. We would require them to make the whole roadway private.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for DOT? Yeah, Commissioner Lindstrom?
How do fire engines, how are they going to turn around?
We have that concern as well, that fire would not be able to make that turn. Now, fire, one of the things I mentioned to our construction manager, they may not have to. Maybe they can, they have a measurement that they have that they, and I only know this from sitting down and being there when they're talking about site plans, that they have a hose run that they can make, but that is really a question for fire, because that would have been part of their review. So they're here today, and you can call them up after me. I do not believe that they have provided enough parking for the fire requirement for this amount of dwelling units, but that would be one of their comments.
Could they clean up the concern and still keep a private alley if they widen just a small portion of the private alley on the north, assuming north is at the top here, at the northwest corner, by making that wider so a truck could, a fire truck could take a right turn into the public street and then back up?
For a private street, hammerheads are something that they could consider as far as a turnaround that fire accepts. It's not accepted on a public street, but it is accepted as a private turnaround. So that's certainly a site plan revision that they could submit that to be reviewed. I don't believe they have enough room with this particular approach of a site plan for a cul-de-sac, and I think that's why they have the site plan they do. Now, they could certainly, you know, on the area they have, have a site plan that has a cul-de-sac, but it would have a significant impact on the number of units that they would be able to put on the site.
What's the, can you give me specifics on how big a cul-de-sack would have to be?
I believe our current cul-de-sack minimum requirement is 40-foot radius interior, but I would have to look at the standard to be sure I don't design them as a typical everyday thing.
Any other concerns or comments you want us to try to address?
No, just that as this is designed, this would be a recommended private street, and we'd be glad to look at another street design to see if it could be public, but that would be our stance as it is.
And how many more parking spaces do you think would be adequate? Do you have an opinion on that?
Again, that's a fire comment that has to do with the number of units and that they require, based on the length of the driveway and the number of units.
You called a fire comment, but, you know, what happens is a practical matter, is folks just start parking in the roads if they...
Yeah, so where it interacts with DOT has to do with that we don't allow perpendicular parking, but we do allow the parallel parking, which they've shown a couple of parallel spots on the road.
Okay, thank you.
And they can do a wider road to have more on-street parking without impacting lanes, but that's, again, a thing that they would have to, could impact the amount of space they had for units, and they would have to work with us as far as whether or not that would be acceptable for a public road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Can we hear from the Fire Department?
Jeff Burr, Cobb Fire.
How you doing, Jeff? We just talked about parking quite a bit. Can you give us comments in terms of adequate parking for the site plan?
Sure. I don't have, I'm having some technical difficulties, so I don't have my computer with me, but we do require, it doesn't appear that they have sufficient parking. Our parking is based on driveway width, driveway length, and the capacity of the garage, and what I'm seeing looks like the parking is insufficient. So I don't think that they have enough for guest parking.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Blon.
Thank you. So I happen to have a son who owns a townhome, and that's up in Alexandria, Virginia, and I just know parking's always an issue there. He's fortunate. He lives on a corner, so he has a longer driveway, so he can actually stack a couple cars in his driveway, which alleviates his problem, but neighborhood-wise, there's a problem there. I'm familiar with the overlook at Maryetta Country Club. There are townhomes there. Based on comments of residents there, there's not adequate parking. Do you have any thoughts as to how many more parking spaces we should require or what other conditions we should require to, in your opinion, have adequate parking here?
Can you minimize, that's so I can see how many units are there? 24 units? If the driveways are 24 foot, I mean, 20 foot wide, 22 foot long, and they can fit two cars in the garages, they would need 12 guest parking if those dimensions and capacity of the garage are met. And it looks like they may have maybe three guest parking spaces there by in front of units one through four.
And that kind of presupposes that everybody uses their garages for cars, and over time, it's been my experience that no matter what the covenants say, that doesn't necessarily happen?
Well, I couldn't comment on that, but we typically have difficult time navigating neighborhoods like that. And in those cases, we receive complaints from the fire, from the stations, and we have them put up no parking signs throughout the whole complex. So we only do that whenever we get a complaint.
So you're thinking basically about another nine to 10 parking spaces would be in order for this development?
Yes, if those dimensions are met, if those dimensions aren't met, then it would be 24. They would need to have 24 guest parking spaces.
Commissioner Blon, can I interject here for a second?
Certainly.
You know, there are three parallel parking spaces shown in front of lots, in front of units two, three, four, but in front of units nine through 12, there are nine perpendicular parking spots. So there are 12 guest parking spots on the property.
Okay. Does that change your analysis at all?
It does, yeah. I could see that, yeah. Yeah, that does change it.
All right. So do you think now this plan is closer to adequate? Do you see a need for a few more? Where do you weigh, where do you come in on that?
Well, if those dimensions are met, then the guest parking should be sufficient, but I do have concerns about the width of that alley. Looks like it's 20-foot back of curb, the back of curb, I think. And we require 20-foot front of curb, clear, clear access, 20-foot clear access. So that would be one concern.
Okay.
And then another concern would be the radius, as DOT mentioned, our trucks making that turn to complete a turnaround, that would be a concern.
Okay, so then what driveway sizes would be needed to minimize the need for off-driveway parking, in your opinion?
If they have 12 guest parking spaces, as was mentioned, the driveway width would need to be 20-foot wide, the driveway length would need to be 22-foot wide, and the garages would have to hold two cars minimum.
Okay, so with the plan in front of us, my concern as to those parameters would be as to perhaps Lot 8 and some of the lots up top, 9, 10. Do you know if they meet those parameters?
I do not know, but it doesn't appear that they do.
Okay. Okay, we'll go back to the applicant on that. Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
You have questions? Okay, thank you. Can we have the applicant back up? Kevin? Thank you. Number of things have come up. Let's start with, well, let me ask some of my questions, then we'll get back to parking. The, I was going to ask about amenities, and you kind of wrapped up at the end of it. So talk to me about what that potential would be. I heard you said fire pit, and then where would that be?
Sure.
Yeah, so there's a couple of locations. One is here. Again, this is, this Stormwater area is shown much larger, just to make sure we can accommodate it, so there's actually, will be additional area here for a community gathering structure, and it could be a gazebo or a pavilion or a fire pit, something of that nature that works, as well as in this area here where you'll have the, in combination with the mail kiosk.
You just answered my second question. I was going to ask about the mailboxes, if they was individually.
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's just get into parking. We've heard the concerns from DOT about the private alley. Any, was there any consideration in making the entire street a private street versus public?
Yes. As I understand, when I have read the DOT comments and had discussions with them previously, the issue, if you, let's remove the private alley from it altogether. If this was a cul-de-sac townhome development, it still will not meet the 50-foot driveway spacing for any townhome development. You don't, this is a standard, fairly typical townhome layout, 24-foot wide townhomes with driveways. It's not going to meet the 50-foot distance requirement that DOT has. So no townhome development can meet that standard, which is where then their recommendation is for them to be private, and that's fine. We have no issue with this being a private street, and it can be a private street. It would be one that would be maintained by the HOA in perpetuity. DOT has been very accepting of that, as long as you have the stipulation that it's going to be maintained in perpetuity by the HOA, and that at the LDP stage, you do have a study that's prepared that documents what the future costs will be, and those will be set aside and reviewed by DOT for future maintenance by the HOA. And that's not an issue here. We're happy to do that in this instance. I think now it's kind of evolved, and this is a longer answer than you wanted, but I think it's an important note. It's kind of evolved over some time. We did have public streets and townhomes, and now that DOT has become focused on that standard of the 50-foot of separation, that can't be met in a townhome development, and so they have to be private. And they've said that in their comments of more recent vintage, and have said it in these comments as well. So we have no issue with it being a private street development, which it has to be for DOT. If you want to meet DOT's recommendations, it has to be a private street development regardless in that regard. So we just make the whole thing private, and I think that addresses DOT's concern at that point from my standpoint.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the answer. Additional questions? Commissioner Blon?
I can address parking if you'd like.
Commissioner LeSueur?
This could be an optical illusion, but it seems like 9 through 14, 20 through 15 have more narrow driveways. Please tell me that's just an optical illusion.
It's just an optical illusion. All the, we have a driveway detail on the plan that was submitted as part of the zoning, so that's just an optical illusion.
Kevin, are these two-car garages, or these are like one and a half cars?
These are two-car garages. We do have a stipulation that it's two-car garages. And it includes the stipulation that the garages have to be used for vehicle parking and cannot be converted into storage space that would be included in the covenants. Obviously, that's dependent on the strength of the HOA, but it is there to the extent we can address that.
I know that it's imperative to the builder to make, put as much in as possible, but I'd like to see you consider removing completely 14 and 15. That would give you a lot more space, and the parking wouldn't be a problem.
If I could address parking, then I'm happy to, since you brought it up, or I know Commissioner Blon was asking about it.
I do want you to think about removing 15.
Sure, understood that.
Commissioner Blon?
Would you like to address parking?
I sure would. Yeah, so the fire, it's actually, and you've got a good explanation of it, but actually it is Cobb Fire that has the guest parking requirement and not DOT. You would think that would not be the case, but it's actually a fire, emergency services, public safety protection so that there is adequate guest parking outside of driveways and garages, so they don't have to navigate around cars that are parked in the street for emergency services.
So that's where that rule comes from. Mr. Burr did a good job of explaining that they have a rule, and if driveways, if you have two-car garages and your driveways are a certain width, 20 feet, your driveways are a certain length, minimum 22 feet, then that means your additional guest parking is calculated at .5 per unit, meaning in a 24-unit development, if your driveways meet those specifications, the minimum parking requirement is 12 for this development. And we have provided a minimum of 12 guest parking spaces. We do have the detail on the large site plan, so these driveways do exceed the 22 feet in length and meet the 20 feet in width per fire marshal's requirement. So we do meet what they have determined to be adequate parking for this development.
So while we're on, before moving off of parking, so like my kid who lives up in Alexandria, he's fortunate to have a unit like 14 here, an end unit with an extra long, so he can stack two cars in there, so he never has a parking, or seldom has a parking problem.
Right.
But you're confident that every one of these lots has at least 22 feet of length to the driveway as this plan is presented?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Let me ask you to comment on walkability here. Are there any plans to do any sidewalks at all? Is this what this plan purports to show as a sidewalk on the right side?
Yes, there is a sidewalk on both sides of the entry road, entry street, on both sides, and the only part that doesn't have a sidewalk shown is at the rear.
Yeah, which is shown as a private alley here.
Right.
Yeah, where there really wouldn't be any cars moving too quickly.
No.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so then connecting up at the entrance road, is there Wood Meadows Drive, is there a sidewalk running down Wood Meadows at present?
I don't know if there's an existing sidewalk on Wood Meadows, but we're required, per DOT comments and recommendations and standards, to install a sidewalk along our front edge of Wood Meadows, as well as Powder Springs Road.
Okay, and then...
It's not shown here, but that's, it's covered with DOT's recommendations and standards.
Can you just tell me what kind of amenities are in this area in terms of like restaurants, coffee shops?
Yes, and yes, and yes. This is a very short distance from the intersection of Powder Springs and Macklin Road, which has, if you're familiar, has a Publix and has a Chick-fil-A, and it has a variety of different restaurant options and retail shopping and Publix and so forth. And it's also directly across the street are two smaller retail centers as well.
Okay. It's been my limited, again, this is a limited experience that I have, based principally on my son's townhome community in Alexandria, but based also on the overlook near Stylesborough.
Sure.
That most folks I know of who live there tend to either not have children yet or to be empty nesters. Do you happen to have any experience with the communities that usually flow out of these in terms of the number of children, such do you have a, do you have any gauge on the impact on the community that you anticipate in terms of the school issue that was raised by the Cobb Schools?
Sure. And this is just anecdotal, I mean, just from experience with developments and seeing townhome communities and who's talking with clients and developers and builders and so forth. Townhome communities such as...
not have children yet, or, uh, to be empty nesters. Uh, do you, do you happen to have any experience with, uh, the communities that, that usually flow out of these in terms of the, the number of children, such, do you have a, do you have any gauge on the impact on the community that you anticipate in terms of the school issue that was raised by the Cobb Schools?
Sure, I, and this is just anecdotal, I mean, just from, uh, you know, experience with developments and seeing townhome communities and who's, um, talking with clients and developers and builders and so forth. A townhome community such as this, it's a, you know, it's on the smaller end of only 24. Um, you know, you would think that the typical buyer, uh, for this, uh, these will be high 300s, 400s. Uh, so it's a very attainable, which is hard to believe, um, you know, that's, but that's considered attainable, uh, these, in this time. Uh, so you have, uh, a, a location where people can buy their home. Uh, it's an attainable price that they can buy their home. You'll have, um, it'll be young professionals, young couples. Uh, it may be, um, very young families, um, at this point, that may, uh, want to, you know, they see this as a place to buy their home and start their family and that type of thing. Uh, is probably more what you will receive here. There'll be a, you should see maybe a, a couple of them that, uh, that are sold to empty, more empty nester, uh, type of, uh, a couple or individual, uh, so you get a mixed bag with that. Uh, but primarily, I would see this as a location for young couples or young professionals, or, or very young families, uh, with maybe one, uh, one child, that type of thing, that's, that's younger. As far as the school impact, I think overall, we haven't seen the school system, you know, appear in quite some time. I think if you look overall, uh, it's school-wide capacity, we're actually under capacity and it's have a declining school age, uh, capacity that's, that's occurring, and population that's occurring, uh, system-wide. I think if we can encourage young people to buy a home here in Cobb County, that's great for the school system. And I get that the school district wants to make sure that the commission and the board are always aware of capacity issues if, if it's at an elementary school or a particular location. But I also think the long-term health of our school system depends on young families moving here and having the opportunity for young couples and young professionals to move here and live in Cobb County and not be priced out of this place.
And then one, one more question that, uh, I apologize for being redundant and burdening you folks with this question over and over again when it comes to townhomes. But when it comes to townhomes, I just know from that project in Alexandria where my, where my son lives, uh, he, he paid for a new roof, but right next door to him, so, you know, you, you mentioned 24 feet wide or whatever, whether it's 24, 26, whatever, but then right next door, there's an old roof. The, the, the folks, the developers ever give any thought to making roof maintenance and replacement part of the common area?
It would be here for this. That's more common here, in Virginia, it's not as common. Um, it is far more common and typical here that the Homeowners Association for Townhome Developments, actually maintains the roofs so they can have...
So we can avoid the very issue you've, you've discussed, and that would be the case here.
Thank you.
And can you add, um, along with the roof, the, the painting of the sides? I'm assuming this will be side, have siding on it, it should be...
Yeah, we can add that.
Well, it should be consistent.
Yes, that's, yes, exterior and roof maintenance.
No one can have like pink.
Correct, correct. The HOA would be responsible for roof maintenance and, as well as that exterior.
Is that in your stipulations or?
It's not, but we're happy to add that.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, any other questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for anyone else that you guys need?
Ju- just the chair, I, I don't know if you're, uh, if, if you have received all the, all the input from Michael, and his thoughts, so you're comfortable moving forward, or?
Uh, I'm comfortable with a recommendation, but now, there was a, uh, I hate that Stormwater is not here because the questions were about Stormwater, and I do appreciate the applicant, um, sharing with us that, that was a revisit with Mr. Heath and Stormwater, but we really need to hear from him because those were the concerns pre coming into this. But I'm ready to make a recommendation if y'all don't have any other questions. Alright, uh, with that, uh, the recommendation is to hold Z7 for 30 days, um, and to allow, uh, so we can hear from Stormwater on the issues raised in the original application. And that would be my recommendation.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Bollone, any discussion? Let's call the question. It's voted three to zero to hold Z7 for 30 days, thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 9, Jose A. Esquera, request a land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure in Land Lot 773 of the 19th District. Property is located on the south side of, uh, King Arthur Drive, west of Castle Way. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 9? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Well, in that case, I would want to recommend that we hold this, so that we can have appropriate, so we can have interpretation here, services.
Yeah, and it's gonna be continued.
Continued. Okay, so we're gonna continue, well, let me make the recommendation, then we'll do that. So, I'm ready to make, make a recommendation on LUP 9, that we continue this case, uh, for 30 days, in the hopes that we can get an interpreter here. And I will instruct that after the, after we pass the motion.
Was that, you made the motion?
Yes.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Bollone, any discussion? Let's call the question. Okay, vote to continue this, uh, for 30 days, and is it Mr. Esquena, is that how you say it? Can you, uh, bring an interpreter with you in 30 days? You come back, okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Alright, next case is, uh, LUP 10, Jose R. Medina, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 773 of the 19th District. Property is located on the west side of Sir Galahad Drive, east of Corbin Place. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 10? Let the record show there's no one opposed, would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Uh, well, I don't have no, no issue with it, the tenant is the...
If you, if you, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh, just state your name for the record, and then you can start.
Okay, my name is Jose R. Medina, and I own the, um, 1524 Sir Galahad. What is my tenant, they got more cars, what they need, I don't even know. He says some heavy sand car for friends, something, so somebody's complaining about the cars.
Anything else you want to share before we?
Well, what it is, we were not, can we park four cars, because they say only have parked three. So we tried to, uh, see can we have like four, four cars. Because the roadway is long, and always the cars being on the roadway, so somebody complaining be too many cars.
Okay, is it, um, alright, um, I'm, I'm ready to ask you some questions, but if you're done, I want you to, I want you to share everything you want to share first before I ask a question.
I think I see.
Okay, um, this is in District 4 as well, so I'll, I'll lead this discussion. So, in looking at the case, it looked like you wanted to park five cars, so let, take me back to the very beginning. How many folks live in the house that are related?
Well, they, beginning, I went out to two adults and three kids, right? But one of those kids came out to adults.
How, how old are the three kids?
Uh, now they had, uh, just two kids, one is, um, 12, and other one is like, nine.
Okay, so they're, so they're not... So they're not driving?
Those two not driving, so I got three drivers.
So it's three drivers?
Yeah.
Two adults and adult chat, okay. And how many cars do you have? Because I'm, I'm looking at one thing that's talking about five cars, I heard you say four, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, well, I think they...
Bring it together.
Like, always you had extra car, you know? So they, they want to be like five cars.
Okay, so it'd be five cars.
Yeah, how many we can get parked there, you know?
Okay.
Because I got seven right now.
Is, is one of them a work vehicle? Can, well, let me, let me back up. Walk me through the adults and who and what car.
Well, what it is, the all three adults, they use their cars, I feel, um, the guy, and, and, and the women, he got two each one, but one for work and one for, you know, for the weekend or whatever, you know?
Right, is there any, um, with the work vehicle, is there anywhere else the work vehicle can be parked? Like, at the work job, or is there another location that the work vehicle could be, uh, stored at?
Well, they don't have no, no other place to park on, on the road, because the roadway is big enough. But what it is, they look like so many cars, but they, they probably had to park somewhere, they do, but where, really, they need to park on the roadway.
And are all the cars being parked in the driveway, or are they parked on the street?
No, no, not on the street, not on the street, everyone is feeding the roadway. Nothing on the road, just everything in, in roadway.
And, uh, okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for that?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Lester.
I may have missed this, do you have a garage?
Have what?
Do you have, does your house have a garage?
Uh, yeah, they do.
Is someone living in the garage?
No, no, nobody living in the garage. What it is, they use the garage for, um, a storage, because the laundry room is in the garage, in one part of the garage. It's two-car garage, but they use, uh, it was like that already when I bought the house. One part of the garage, they use for laundry room. They had the laundry room, and also, yeah, they got the, uh, the furnace and everything in the same location. And it's kind of, only had one-car garage.
So it's one car?
One-car garage, and what they does, half the, the garage, they use for the laundry room and for the heater.
And there's one business truck?
Yeah.
Can the business truck park in the garage?
Nah, because he got, it's a van, he got a ladder some top, and I can't fit in it.
For ladders and...
Yeah, escalators in top.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do we have code enforcement here? Very bare bones today. Because I wanted to, I, I got some code enforcement questions, but, um...
I, I don't understand you, I, I do have a question, I, I don't understand. Your, I think you said, your wife has two cars?
Yeah.
And what does she do with those two cars, and what does your son do with two cars?
What, what she does, she work with one car, right? But what he kind of got all tents they use for work, she just cleans the houses. What he does, they don't want to have a other car, when he goes shopping or something, he use the other car. But he don't keep the same one, because they got a two and one, and he park that one, and when he go out somewhere, they take the other one. So they got two. And the, the guy, the same thing, he got a van and a car. They use the van for work, and a car for like, you go out, whatever, you know, weekends or whatever.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, we've heard these kind of cases many, many times, this is not unusual. Um, okay, thank you, I'm gonna have you to have a seat. Let me ask, um, you have a seat, and then we'll call you back up if we need to. Um, let me ask of staff, is there a staff recommendation on this, or no?
The staff recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is to deny the request.
And, and that's because the code, based on the size of the house, the code is for three cars allowed, right?
Then that's correct, this is, this is the result of a code enforcement complaint from, uh, probably November last year. So the staff recommendation was to deny it based on the code enforcement paperwork.
Okay. Think code enforcement's not here. Um, to talk to them about what they saw, um...
Can we give them six months?
Yeah, that's what I want to do. Can we, can we give them time? I, I, I'm, I'm a little lost on what we can do, I know we keep hearing these kind of cases, but I'm, I'm a little lost at what we can do. Can we give them time to, what's the, to, to lower the number of cars? Like, um, I'm looking for staff's help.
I, I think before we can give you advice, can we have the applicant come back to the front?
Yeah, come back up, Mr. Um...
I just need to clarify something that's not clear to me, based on what he just stated. So, a- are there four related adults in the house, or three related adults in the house?
Well, they were said that, when I run the house, there was two adults, now it's three adults.
Three adults, okay.
Yeah, and two kids.
And, and three's fine, because in your paperwork, you had five related adults. So, are there five adults there, or three adults? And, and we don't...
There's three, so they say they, they kind of, what they did, this guy, they, they think they had it. Then somebody tell, make a letter, how many people were there, and he put five adults, or four, I don't know how many they put it in.
And, and the children under 18 don't count? So, so the, the kids that are nine, 12, don't count in this total? It's just the adults over 18 years old. So that's three adults, or five adults?
No, it's not five adults.
Five, so it's three?
Probably four.
Four?
Because the, the kids already turned, uh, 18, it'd be four adults.
Gotcha, so there's four adults, and you want four cars?
Yeah, well, they, they, they say five cars, so I don't know whatever you can get, you know? Because there's his lease, it's gonna be enough in four more months.
Okay, so he, he'll be gone in four months?
Well, the lease, they got on be four more months.
Okay.
So they, um, they allowed to, five cars, you know, he probably said, because it's good tenant, you know, they don't have no, no issue with anybody, so, like I said, cross the street from me, that, there's a house right in the corner, you got ten cars, and I don't know why they get anybody on top of the grass and everything, and nobody say anything to.
And do all the cars park in the driveway?
All the cars in the roadway, I don't, I don't allow to maintain to be parked on the grass.
Okay, or, or, or the street?
Not, not at all.
So they're all in the driveway?
No, everything in, in the roadway.
Okay.
Because roadway is long, it's, I did, I do the concrete for living, but I did the roadway long.
Yep, and we see that on the picture, what is, what is the code? I don't have the code enforcement report here, or I can't find it. What, is it, code enforcement was about just the number of cars in the driveway, or is it a street violation? That's what I don't know.
It was the number of cars, the, the initial complaint was for having six cars in the driveway, and that came in November 13th, 2024. So they did investigate it, and they found, uh, more than the three that were permitted.
And, and so, at one point, there were six cars, and it's one of them being used in the one-car garage right now?
Well, they, they're not used to the, the garage a lot, for, because they, uh, sometimes they, they do, they kind of put it every car outside, and I told her to put one car inside.
Yeah.
And they say, how about I had, um, do something on, on, on the garage? I don't, they don't have no storage outside, no, no storage.
Yeah.
They use it sometimes for the lawn mower, whatever, but put everything inside the garage.
The issue is that you're gonna keep running into a code enforcement issue, until you're gonna have to utilize that one-car garage. Whether we do anything or not, you're gonna have to utilize that garage.
Okay.
Because if not, you'll be right back with a code enforcement, correct?
Correct.
So, the one-car garage has to be used, our question now is, how many cars in the driveway, correct?
Well, he, he's allowed to have, um, three outside, that's the maximum he's allowed to have. So, you know, the PC can look at, you know, kind of come into a compromise in allowing the four adults to stay off in the house, and four cars outside and one car in the garage. Okay.
Would you, that, that would be, again, it goes back to my earlier statement, you'd have to use that garage if we allowed the four cars in the driveway, you still...
Okay, that's fine, I tell put one inside.
It'd have to be in there all the time.
It had to be inside.
Yep.
Yep.
And be four cars outside.
Yes, it'd have to be in there.
I don't have no issue, I think it'd be fine.
Okay, uh, I'm ready to make, make any other questions of the applicant. So my recommendation, uh, my motion is going to be to allow, um, four cars outside, uh, as part of this lot, and I would do that for, um, the 24 months.
Second?
We got a lot of seconds.
Todd, wait, and, and four adults?
And for four adults.
Okay.
For four adults.
Four adults? Four adults?
How did four, four adults come into this?
That's what's on the application form.
You have three children.
Oh, two, yes, two, two childrens.
Two children that are under 18?
Yeah.
And then you have one who's 19? Or how old's the third one? You told us first you had three children.
Well, one is already eight, 18, one of those kids, is 18, so there'd be four adults total right now because there is two kids and it's everything, um, two kids and four adults is what they got. But they fit, I guess they share the rooms or something, I don't know.
So it sounds like you've got two families.
No, not two families, no, no. It's the, the woman's brother is when they live there, his brother. And he, they shared the room with the, the other guy turned 18, he shared the room with them. It's two men's. He shared the room and, and the other room, they shared two, all the kids shared all the room. There's no, it's only one female.
So four adults and two kids?
Yes.
That's what I'm counting, okay. So my recommendation still stands, my motion still stands. I have a second from whichever name you want to pull. I say any more discussion? I'm gonna call the question.
Okay.
It's a vote of three to zero to allow four adults.
Okay.
With the five, that means four cars outside, but one has to be in the garage.
Inside the garage.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And come back in two weeks, okay?
Yeah, what they got right here, two weeks.
Come back in two weeks.
Another question. I know this, not supposed to be, say this, so for some reason, my mother, he just passed up three days ago and I got a funeral. And I'm thinking to, she want to be buried in Mexico, my mom. So he's in the funeral, I'm waiting for the funeral, see what he get all the permits and everything. But just in case I don't come on the 15, I was going to be buried my mom for any, can I stay my day or something or what?
Yes.
I can bring the paperwork that way you see I was going to be, but just in case I be around town, I coming in, but not, I just can bring the paperwork and you located what I was, you know?
Did the planning commissioner just want to put this on the consent agenda? So the person he sends could just raise their hand.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. So do I need to amend the...
Yes.
...motion to also include LUP 10 on the consent agenda? I have a second on that.
Second?
And I have a second from Commissioner Lindstrom. Let's recall the question on that. And that new revised motion to also allow for this to be on the consent agenda is approved three to zero. Thank you. So come back and, I mean, if you're not able to be here in two weeks, send someone and they'll be able to raise a hand to show that you have someone represented.
Okay, I can do that for, just in case I didn't come, I can send somebody.
Yes.
Because you know, there is something not, it don't, it was not planning, you know? My mother just passed out like three days ago and she's in the funeral right now, you know, there is...
Sorry to hear that.
His last question was, he said, I want you burying me in Mexico with my husband.
Sorry to hear that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here today. Thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 11, Richard Gonzalez, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows, which is a renewal, in Land Lot 795 of the 19th District. Property is located on the north side of Hopkins Court, east of Hopkins Road. Is the applicant present? Applicant is not present, Mr. Chairman.
This is the day that keeps giving. I know I missed a couple, gosh. Okay, do we want to just continue this one? Let me recommend that we continue LUP 11 for 30 days to hopefully allow for Mr. Gonzalez to come.
Second?
I have a second from Commissioner Belong. Any other discussion? Let's call the question. So vote of three to zero, we recommend continuing LUP 11 for 30 days.
Okay. Next case is LUP 12, Jonathan Martin, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 307 of the 17th District. Property is located on the southeast corner of Norton Circle and Orange Drive. Is the applicant present? Applicant is not present either, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have a LUP, this is LUP 12. I'm going to also recommend continuing LUP 12 for 30 days to allow Mr. Martin to, to present his case.
Second?
Yeah, a second from Commissioner Belong. Any other discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of three to zero to continue LUP 12 for 30 days.
All right, and last case we have is LUP 14, Nordia Wright Agnet, request a temporary land use permit for a church and social club or a church and a social adult club for seniors in Land Lot 256 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Channery Drive, southwest of Callaway Road. The applicant is present? Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 14? That director shows no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
My name is Nordia Wright Agnet. My desire is to have an adult day, to be in Thankful Baptist Church. It's an adult, it's an adult social club for seniors. My goal and desire is for seniors to gather from the church, to have, to have social engagement. I plan to have memory games, health, healthcare prevention, and that's my main goal is to have the social club within the church.
Okay, listen, just want to make sure you're done and then we'll have some questions, I'm sure, so. Okay, this is in District 1. I'm going to turn it to Commissioner Belong to lead the discussion.
Okay, and, and we talked on the phone about this and among the other things you plan to offer are things like to help seniors avoid getting hurt in falls and things of that nature, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I, I don't have any more questions. I'm ready to make a motion after you folks have a chance.
Commissioner Lindstrom.
Is this going to be held in your home or in the church?
It's going to be held in the church one day a week.
Oh, that sounds like a great idea.
From 10 to 2, yes, four hours.
No, no further questions from me.
Okay, thank you. So my, my motion is to approve this land use permit and it's for 24 months, right? So if, if things get too crazy there, we'll hear about it when you come back for renewal in 24 months. But, but this seems to me to be reasonably consistent with a lot of what churches do in terms of outreach and so that's my motion that we approve it.
Second?
Thank you.
Yeah. I was going to say, can we add it to consent?
Yes.
And the second still stands. I have a second from Commissioner Lindstrom also to add this to consent. Any further discussion? Let's call the question. Vote of three to zero to recommend approval of LUP 14 for a period of 24 months as well as add to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the agenda for today. We have a couple...
Do I need to come back on the 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the March 4th planning zoning hearing.
If I could, before, before making that motion, I was informed before today's meeting that Ms. Lindstrom plans to leave us after today's meeting and I just want to express my gratitude and thanks. It's been a privilege to work with you. And since I didn't get the chance to say the same thing about Commissioner Anderson, I want to say that there as well. He, he left us in January and it was a privilege to work with him and it's just been, it's made it very pleasant to be here and have a chance to work with these fine folks.
Thank you very much, Fred.
I want a second, that, that's awesome. Been great working with you and we'll miss you. Thanks.
Everybody's been so nice and kind. Very nice organization.
With that, I'll go ahead and move to approve the March 4 minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second from Commissioner Lindstrom. Let's call the question. Vote of three to zero to approve the minutes from the March 4th zoning hearing. And now entertain a motion to enter...
Oh, Mr. Chairman, there's one special visitor.
Oh, our commissioner is here. We should have kept this as part of the business.
Oh, my goodness.
This is just a little something.
Love it.
Thank you for your service on the planning commission.
Goodness, this is beautiful.
We're going to miss you.
This is wonderful, Fred.
This is beautiful.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you all for letting me in the room.
We love when the commissioners pop in. Yeah, we love when you pop in.
That was the best part of the zoning hearing.
That's right, that's right. No, thank you so much for being here and it's a nice gesture and well deserved, so thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity that you gave.
Be safe. Keep in touch.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the minutes of the March 24th special call meeting, agenda review work session.
Some, some move for approval as written?
And I'll take a second from Commissioner Lindstrom.
Yeah.